Center with RE.
Alrighty, so we'll call this study session to order at six oh five PM to discuss discuss the Kennedy Aquatic Center repair needs. So Tim, we'll just kick it right over to you here.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, as we've gone through the pool at the end of this year, we realized we had some issues. Some major issues, let alone some minor issues that we've had on coming for years. We had three mid, uh, three issues that need to be addressed, probably say immediate, but in the soon proximity to that. Um, as you look at this slide, we have gutter leak, uh, losing water. We have a, we have a portion of the gutter that's actually pushing water back into the pool from an exterior space. Um, we'll get into that a little bit more as we go through this uneven, uneven concrete throughout, which is probably created by the leaks in the pool. Um, and then also filter room repairs is something that we need to look at. That may be able to push off a little bit longer, but not forever. Um, as we look at, as we look at this picture here, you get a, you can see there's about a two foot gap between the top of the gutter and the water level itself. This was about, this picture was taken about a week and a half after we closed. I did let it sit with the water full because we wanted to see how quickly it would drop. Um, you can see how quickly it turns green too. Uh, so this is, as we look at this, we lost two approximately two feet of water within a week and a half's time. We know that there's a leak in that wall. Where we know that there's a major issue right now is between the diving boards. There is a pocket of water collecting underneath the ground somewhere. And then forcing its way back into the pool through the gutter system. Um, when I say forcing it, unfortunately, we're not getting as much pushed back into the pool as we are losing. So, um, and it's only when it, when the system is completely pressurized. So the gutter system in the pool were, are twenty, approximately 20 years old. We're, we're at a process, an outdoor pool in Michigan. That's probably pushing it anyway for any major repairs. Um, as we can go to the next slide, Mayor, thank you. As we look at, this is actually where we, we can see the main culprit. And this is where the water is spraying back into the pool from when everything is pressurized. So, um, these seams, this is stainless steel gutter system. We have talked with the company, there's multiple ways we can address this. It can either be, um, we could put an entire new gutter system in throughout the facility. Or we could go through and, um, weld them back up and, and pressurize it. After speaking with our, with our contractor that has been working one-on-one with us to at least try to diagnose some of these issues. Um, they've recommended it's a stainless steel. There shouldn't be anything wrong with the steel itself. We may be able to maintain as much of it as we can and pressurize the system, find majority of the leaks and then seal them again. Uh, but the underlying problems are what lies behind, um, as we go to the next slide, I believe. Um, you'll start to see, uh, the uneven concrete and the concrete dropping. Uh, this is actually a picture near the slide, you can see where my finger is on the top there. Um, and drop to the bottom, there's about a two inch drop in the cement that level there. So there has been some shifting and some water movement underneath the ground. Has it all been because of the pool itself of water leaking out? Probably not, but there is some concerns to be aware of throughout the entire area. Um, when we, we had, we had gotten a lot of rough estimates of what these costs would take to fix this. And, uh, let's see here. We're I give you, I give you the, the worst, I'll give you the numbers at the end, we'll keep going through the slides. Cause there's different, there's many different ways to, to look and address it. You can see some more uneven concrete that we've patched over the years, some dropping, some moving. That's common in cement around a pool area, especially in Michigan, like I say, with the weather constantly changing, freezing. Any little crack the water can get into, it's going to affect. We can go to the next slide as well. Some more, some more, it's more. We can keep. Um, one of the other parts this, that this plays into is you'll see these drains, um, throughout the deck area. These are things that we would also be looking at if we, uh, as we do cement work in the area to make sure that the drains are sealed and not draining off into the dirt underneath, but actually filling back into the system itself. So those are different, uh, things that could be occurring underground. This is just basically some more concrete work that could be done, um, in the long term. When we look at if we're doing work on concrete, these probably are things that we would want to address at the same time. These are the entrance ways into the girls and boys locker rooms in the facility. Next one. And the last thing that we had on this, uh, list was the filter room repairs. Our filters are having some issues. Um, there's, they've been issues for quite some time now. We've, we've put some Band-Aids, we've patched them, we've worked with different things. The, the current system, we've replaced our, our pumps quite a few times over the last five, six years. Um, it's basically due to a freezing issue and to some, uh, ceiling issues of the actual containment system that's buried below ground there. It is a basically a large stainless steel box in the ground that'll fill with water. Um, there is some, there's some internal breaks in this, in the stainless steel. We have had them patched, we have had them repaired over time, but they've just gone above and beyond of what can, uh, consistently be patched and repaired. This leads to some different things and some different issues as we get down below, it's a sand filter. The sand has some fingers that are in the bottom. Those are allowing some sand to slide by, um, and get into the system, which then also creates some issues with the heating, the heaters and such like that in there. So those are definitely things that we need to keep in mind and look at as we, as we go forth. Um, and I believe that should be, that should wrap us up, I believe. So. Yes, ma'am.
Question.
So, yep, we'll go, yeah, you get started.
Does Honeywell have anything to do with any of this filtering system?
No, they did not.
So they're, um.
Well, I, I they, the only thing that they really did at the pool themselves was help us address lighting and replace the, uh, the boilers. So.
Okay, so they're just more mostly in the Kennedy Arena area. They're not in the pool area. Um, one question, maybe now is not the time to answer, but when you talk about the numbers. Yeah, I'd like to know the numbers and also I'd like to know how the pool did this summer.
Well, the, yeah, I'll, I'll start with what, what we're looking at proximity of costs. I mean, I, I give you worst case scenario numbers and I, I temper that with the fact of, you know, if, if we truly had to go in and replace all the gutters around the outside of the pool, all the cement around the outside of the pool. Um, and any sometime, some ancillary work with that, we're probably looking at a million dollars. Um, is there, there is an exploratory and the company has approached me with a, uh, a quote of about thirteen thousand, if you have it in here. Um, thirteen thousand, five hundred, it's basically a not to exceed quote. This is so that they could go in, patch the known issues, tear up some of the cement behind those issues. Make, see what is leading to the problem, pressure test the system and see how many additional leaks there are. And basically they're going to be chasing the problem to see how much they can accomplish with that thirteen five. I don't anticipate it being a lot. I think a lot of surface stuff they can attach and, and get into. But I don't think it's going to be long-term fixes behind. Um, so that's, that's some of the things that we run into. The other problem that we've ran into in the past and we've looked at getting the concrete replaced is not everybody wants uh, to attack, to attack the concrete work around a pool. Um, because those gutter systems are sitting there. There's a, there's basically a line of thick caulk in between there and then you have the cement. And if you nudge those gutter systems while taking out that cement, you're going to cause you more issues or more damage or more things of that nature. So there's very few concrete companies that are willing to attack that as well.
Is that concrete, doesn't look like all the concrete around the pool is bad, the certain spots, certain areas?
I would say probably. Is there, there are some that are very bad and there are some that are not as bad. I wouldn't say that there is a single slab that is perfect. So that's, I, I I would love to say that we've, in, in, in working with our DPS and working with the rest of us, we've done a lot at, as you can see, patchwork and grinding of the cement to make sure there's no uneven surfaces. Wayne County comes out and checks it every year, make sure we don't have those uneven surfaces. So we work to, to, to fix those and, and, uh, and make sure it's safe for all to use the pool. Um, and we do that regularly. But as we look at it, we still got to attack the problem at some point, so.
Did you have more questions?
No, that's it. Thank you for now.
Nelson, can I hear you?
Well, I have several different concerns. One is we have no idea what this albatross is going to cost us, none whatsoever. We're just tapping potentially in just as a surface that we, what we might think is a million dollars. It could be much more because we have underlying sand or soil being shifted. Um, my concern is that we lose two fifty a year on that. That's in two years, that's half a million. And we're just getting out of the bonds and now we're putting a lot of money back into it. I'm a little concerned that this is going to be a loss leader of two point five million over the next two years.
Well, and to address, and to address that statement on the two hundred and fifty thousand there, as I look back over the past, um, since fifteen sixteen, uh, we've probably averaged, it's fluctuated anywhere between, uh, a loss of two hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. Over the last two years have been much better than in previous years. Um, and it's been kind of, uh, as we look at next year, we think we're on track to do better than the previous year, but that's all we can, until we get to that year. We can't determine whether, we can't determine what the lifeguard force is going to look like next spring. And, uh, and how many patrons are going to come? The one thing about it is we are probably one of the only outdoor pools, um, in southeastern Michigan, other than if you were to get into Dearborn area. Um, but we are really truly the only one that's left out here.
Well, we, we haven't talked money yet, but how do we, if we go forward with this, how do we plan on paying for this?
That's a great question and I, I always will, uh, kind of lean towards the, uh, the money person in the, in the.
I do have questions for you too, actually. So I don't know if you want to nudge closer to, but I think that's the underlying one, everyone's going to be getting it here. Um, Nelson, were you finished up?
Depending on how the answers go.
Okay, so we'll go to Wendy after that.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if his presentation was done because I think the next phase of what we need to talk about is how we finance that. But just some general questions right now, maybe, and one of that would be, um, what do you see is making the loss less every year? Is there something you can attribute to that? I think we raised our prices and we also were doing an online registration. Um, can you talk about some things that might help the pool increase revenue? And then I have a follow-up.
We, you know, COVID prevent, COVID presented a lot of problems to us, but it also created some minor advantages and we'll, we'll just go with that. Um, and one of them was it allows us a chance to kind of reinvent the wheel of how we look at different things. We did look at our procedures of how the pool was used itself, how people entered, how many people would enter and when they were entering. We were able to create more of a flexible staff schedule, um, based on the amount of, the volume of people. We did do an online registration during COVID, we have stepped away from that a little bit. Um, because it did become a little bit cumbersome for, uh, our regular patrons to utilize. But we are also able to be more maneuverable with our staff and have an idea, if, if it's seventy degrees out and cloudy, we know immediately we're going to be at a minimal staff, um, for the day. We know what our parties are scheduled. Um, we have booked out more birthday parties, more events, different things of that nature throughout a year. And that helps us, um, get a better handle on those things as well.
Okay. And then my follow-up question, and this could be addressed later, but just a comment about, it's not really a question, I guess it's a comment. If we are the only outdoor pool, I know that there's a few indoor pools, we have the YMCA in Southgate, we've got Turtle Cove, which is outdoor. And then there's Flat Rock. Have we studied, like, are they, do they make money by being enclosed? Do they, um, is, is there something that we would collectively do as a region to support the pool? Much like we do the library, if we're the only city providing this service. And, you know, would it also be something to look into? Um, I think we have some agreements with discounts for other cities and so forth. So maybe if they, there's some negotiation we can do if your residents want a discount, can you put some money toward the pool? So I'm just thinking about how we make it, um, more attractive to want to come and, you know, and then how do we get others to invest in the pool as a region? And then, um, is there anything at this time that we can add to the pool such as, you know, maybe we, we know how, um, expensive concrete is for in front of City Hall. Um, is it something where maybe we take out the concrete and put in a lazy river? And make that investment, you know, as some, as a as something that attracts people here. Um, again, if we keep patching, patching, maybe people don't want to come to our pool because it's not inviting. It's not, it doesn't look nice. So is this an opportunity in a sense that we can maybe invest in some other things? Or maybe we do some kind of, um, you know, do we add a different kind of concrete? Like is there, does it have to be concrete? Is it, can it be that permeable surfaces? Can it be, um, grass that they can sit out and picnic on or, uh, some kind of artificial turf inserts? Or, you know, there, maybe we can talk about different ways to that, like have an opportunity to improve it instead of just patching it and we all come out in the end better is also a way that I think about this opportunity.
I, I definitely agree. If we're, if we're looking at something that, um, if we're looking at doing this extensive of work, we're going to definitely look at what are other options to make it more attractive? What are other options in the meantime of doing it while we're doing the work? How can we not spend more money, but how can we tailor that money to make things look better and nicer and more attractive to all? So those are definitely concerns and things that we would look at. I will say this, our pool, our pool is utilized from eight AM, uh, rephrase that, I'm going to go back from six AM in the morning on, and a normal weekday until two PM in the afternoon for swim lessons, swim club, um, swim aerobics, uh, other exercise activities. And the pool usually is filled, um, from about six AM until I'd say two PM in the afternoon. At two PM, we then open our open swim until eight PM at night. And the open swim is a variable that always is, it's going to be based on our weather. If we have a nice, dry, hot summer, we're going to do phenomenal. Um, and, uh, but I will say that our classes and the amount of kids and the amount of people that partake in the programs of learning how to swim, how to participate, um, building a lot of team skills through swim club and doing those types of things is tremendous. And the amount of kids we touch throughout a summer is phenomenal, so.
I agree, yeah.
We'll go to Rick first and I'll go back to you, Nelson. Or was it a follow-up to what you had before? I just want to.
Was, you can go and I'll follow him.
What was it?
Just additional stuff, but let Rick go.
You guys can rock, paper, scissors or something.
Whatever. So a couple of things that haven't been answered yet is somebody asked, how do you plan on paying for it? And I think Karen's the one who's going to have to answer those questions for us. Cause I'll tell you, I'm not going to agree to anything. So I know what it's going to cost us. That's number one. Number two, I understand you just said it's used from six in the morning till two in the afternoon and from two in the afternoon until eight o'clock at night. How long has the pool been here? Twenty some years?
This pool has been, yeah.
No, this pool, we already wasted a bunch of money years ago, but this time, how much it's been here, twenty years? Have we ever made money on this pool, ever?
Never will.
No, but we have other buildings, we're going to talk about spending maybe millions of dollars. And we have other places in this town, we have not invested one diamond in those twenty years, not one dime. And we're going to turn on and invest money in this again. So somebody better figure out how much it's going to cost and it better be less than what I'm thinking. But I just, I just can't see us doing this. And then you won't be open next year, right?
No, if we, if we proceed with what we're looking at right now, we will be open for next summer.
The whole summer.
We will be open for the whole summer. Um, we have the ability to find, we have an ability to get our filter room up and running, um, for next summer. And then we would look at addressing the filter next winter.
Okay. I'm good.
Would that be, I'm just going to, I'm so sorry, is it with the one million investment or the thirteen thousand, five hundred? That we would open?
The thirteen thousand, five hundred is our first step to figure out, basically it's we, we don't know, we don't know what's underneath or behind. And until we get into know what's underneath and behind, we really don't know our total cost. I, when I, when I give you the million dollars, it was expressed to me and I'm, I always say that it's expressed to me by the contractor, that should be the highest number.
Okay.
For that portion of the fix. No, not at all. No, thank you.
That's what I wanted to clarify from that question. Thank you.
Nelson.
Yes, um.
Let's finish Tim's question first and we'll go to Karen's questions. Sorry, I didn't know what else to talk about here.
Oh, go ahead.
You got to go, alright.
Tim, when, when, uh, the pandemic was here and we started registering online, were you able to glean any information of like the usage of the pool by city? Like was Trenton X percent of the usage compared to Flat Rock, Southgate, etc.?
We, we do have that information. I apologize, you do not have that here with me today. Um, but we do have a decent amount of residents that utilize the pool. And is, is it probably more than, than people from outside the community? Yes. Um, but it's probably getting closer and closer to that fifty fifty. I'm not going to say it's there, but it's probably getting closer and closer.
Okay, just trying to figure out usage too, so.
That's it, Mayor, thanks.
Is anyone, oh, Timber, good.
Well, I just have a comment. Um, I've lived here my whole life and that pool is the jewel of this community. When you drive by and you see those fountains going and you see the families out there and that parking lot is jam-packed. Um, I'm sorry, there's got to be a way to put revenue into this. We already have a huge investment there. That pool is never going to make money. It's not designed to make money. It was designed to be a recreational perk for this community. I will stand on top of this table if I have to, to save things like the Trenton Theater, to save things like our pool. And I will not be happy, I can tell you that, if we don't invest some money into what we already invested in. So a lot of families use that and the more out of town residents that come here, they pay a higher fee to come here.
Yes, they do.
So we, you know, there's some money to be made there, but we have quite an investment there. And that is, I mean, I went there as a child and it's still going. I know that's how old it is. But, um, no, it's, it's, and you're doing a great job there. Yeah, could we have more programs there? Yeah, probably. And I, there's ways to do that. There's ways to do that at the rink with advertising and different things that we can make. You know, we kind of figure out ways to increase revenue and make money, not give everything away. And if there's certain things in this town that we can make money doing, then we need to, because we want to save what's best for Trenton. I'm proud to say we're the only pool like that around, not, oh, we shouldn't do it because nobody else does. We do it because we're Trenton. So I'm, I'm one hundred percent for doing what we need to do to save that pool.
Oh, Timber, I hope you didn't misconstrue what I said earlier about us being the only one. I, I pride ourselves, I pride ourselves in being the only one around.
Absolutely, I know you do. And you take great pride in your job, whether it be at the center, the marina, whatever you do, you put a hundred percent in. And that's why this is just some little thing that we have to, you know, we have to maintain. Just like anything else in this town, but we're not giving away the baby and the bathwater all the time. You know, COVID's over, getting done, where families are coming out again and feel safer. And I think they'll only make more money down there in the future. But, uh, no, I'm, I'm one to present for taking care of this. That's it.
Nelson, yes, well, just to clarify a couple of things, Tim, and any of the questions and exchange that you and I are having is not a question on my half of your integrity and your dedication to the job. I want to be clear about that.
Appreciate that.
Um, however, to Timber's point, we have a, two fire stations that are ancient and just not really holding up well. You have a police station that's not holding up well and those things need to be fixed as well. So we have to be careful where we put our money, because if something breaks, we might not have money to fix whatever breaks. So I really think it's important that we look at this, uh, at a topographical view. And I understand Timber's concern of, you know, being a jewel, I get that, but, you know, a lot of money and these other things we need to take care of too. It's just, we have to be careful and I just want to make that note. So thank you.
Anyone, oh, Scott.
I'd just like to make a quick comment. In, in addition to Mr. Perusha's comment, um, we also have a public services department that greatly needs some attention, greatly needs some attention too. And this is about the pool tonight. But we bring up a lot of different departments, that is a department, stop by, see it, it greatly needs attention as well. Kevin's folks do a great job based on what they work out of, so.
Yeah, and to that point, you know, we, um, we could have every department be doing a study session like this right now and we did at the budget. And I realized that, you know, the, we're about, you know, the police department is still open, DPS is still open. If the pool can't open, that's taking away a public service. Uh, so again, I am interested in seeing what we can do. I know Rick. again, I am interested in seeing what we can do. I know Rick contacted some of us about futuring. Scott, you had brought that up. Um, I don't see why, and, and Karen's going to shed quite a bit of light on this for us hopefully next. But I don't see why we can't put all these departments into a package of how we move this city forward. Maybe we do have to do some patching, if that's what it will be to just at least open the pool. But, you know, we need to put all of these, uh, departments and buildings in a, in a package somehow for our residents and see what we can do to improve all of them. And, and, you know, we've talked about this at budget back in March and, you know, here we are again, talking about how we make investments in our public servants. So, uh, and we'll talking about, you know, duct cleaning in our, in our next, you know, in our actual meeting. So, you know, all these little things, but we need to look at it from, from, instead of from the bottom, we need to look at it from the top point of view. Like how is our, how does everybody work together? How do we, you know, instead of patching all the time, can we just come up with a plan to to see what it's going to look like in the future so that when we patch, we know that it's heading toward a better goal in the end. And we're just not only patching, you know, like I want to patch for a future that's better so that we don't, you know, anyway. Hard to express that, but that's what I'm trying to say, you know, we'll make a patch, but if it doesn't help with the overall plan in the future, then, you know, the same thing why the, the wall came down out here because we knew that it had a better future. So, um, that's how I'd like to look at this as we move forward.
Well, you make a good point that, uh, there's a lot of buildings in this town and a lot of things that we have to address. But the thing about it is we might have to bond for our buildings and, and, and put a bond out there. I mean, it, it, the schools did it and this, the residents buy into something when they see a, a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. And our residents voted for the school bonds, which, you know, added a lot of tax dollars for two bond issues for, for their buildings and for whatever they have going, which is really greatly improved the city. So we can't sit here and say, all the money was sucked into the schools and nothing's left for the city buildings. I think the residents will buy into keeping what is good for Trenton and, and, and improving what we need to improve. I mean, we know we got the Westfield, the fire stations, police, everything is a part of the plan. That's why we have to have a futuring session doing just like this. This could be the beginning of it. And this could, you know, we, but we might have to bond for it, but the residents want Trenton to be Trenton. It's why you live here. So we're going to buck up and step up to the plate. Nobody wants to pay more, but nobody's willing to give up anything either. And it's down. That's why you live here.
Yeah. So Tim, you know, we talk about patch, patch, patch. I mean, sometimes things are just, you know, it doesn't make sense anymore to, to remodel. It makes more sense to, to do a complete teardown. And I don't know if it's, you know, pool technology has changed in 20 years. You know, do we look at, I don't know if it'd be even, if you could get one big enough, but a fiberglass, you know, a fiberglass line one. And does that, you know, is that better? I'm not sure. Just, is that something that you've looked at or considered or thought about? Or too early in the game at this point?
I mean, it's, it, I'd be silly to say that we don't look at all opportunities at all points in times. We, we come across a lot of different creative ideas for pools. The pool setup that we have with Marsite is the most common, um, especially in Michigan. Because it's easiest to maintain over time. With a, with a decent cost. Um, so those are, those are different things we've looked at. I'm not going to say we wouldn't explore further. We're always looking at seeing what we can do bigger and better. I mean, for example, if you stare at the filter room that we have up here on this screen, it's kind of hard to see in this picture, but, um, on that top main grain pipe that runs through there, you can see three pieces of paper that are taped across the top. And those probably each have about 20 different steps on, on those pieces of paper. And each one of those steps is how you would backwash the pool. If, if you were to look over at, uh, for example, the new pool at the high school, it's literally a button and a knob. So, you know, we've, we, we probably had state of the art 20 years ago. Uh, it, and there is a lot of things that have changed over time. And would it be more, you know, looking at a different filter system, looking at different things that we have looked at? We've looked at how much money it can save us electricity wise, how much money it can save us by heating source and lack of water loss. Um, so there's definitely things that we would take into consideration as we look further into the projects and.
I mean, my concern on the pool is that you've lost, you know, you've lost water. That, I don't know about the drainage on that site, but you know, you're coming into winter here. I think, you know, I, I think we're going to have probably a little, you know, worse off winter than what we've had in years past. Kind of a gut guess, but, um, but you know, as you have moist ground or, you know, water saturated ground, if that's the case, you're going to get more shifting, more shifting in the ground. You know, the expansion and contraction of that frost line is, is going to impact, continue to impact the pool. It impacts Kevin's water lines throughout the community. And, you know, I mean, he's had some rough years with that as well. I just, uh, you know, I don't know. Um, it's a tough, it's a tough, tough situation. Do you tear the whole thing out? You go without, do you just patch and move forward? And, and it's, uh, I'll be interested to hear what Karen has to say. It's a cost analysis.
Any more Tim questions before we get the, the good ones? So, well, Karen, I think we'll have, uh, run through the numbers here. But I think, I mean, not to really be too, to deduce it too much. But realistically, it's just a matter of whether we want to have a pool anymore or not. I mean, this is, we're not going to be able to open it at this rate. So I think what those options may be are the most important part. But for reference to the one question I'd have, um, what was the amount of the bond that is coming off the books for us at the pool roughly annually? I don't know if you have though.
About a hundred and twenty thousand. So.
Um, but yeah, I'll feel free to take it away.
Dean, were you raising your hand? You wanted to say something?
Just want to stretch.
Million dollars is here to get majority of it right. So if you open that here and possibly up to another million. The following was your, the reason all the, all the costs. So you're at, is it going to go crazy about that? No, we really think so. Those numbers are on the high side, but it's really simplified things. It, it's great as recognized. We got two stations, we got fire stations, we got, but what I can tell you is from everything that going to have to ask in the very, very near term, next thirty days, authorize the intention that are not funded for, not planned for, be able to open. You want to open. So it's great if you want to have a future inspection, you can't follow all these other buildings. We don't commit funds and Karen's going to give some options, whether we don't commit funds doing it. You're not going to have. Water loss is huge.
Four hundred bucks a day.
If, if we don't save a million dollars then through the fire station, the fire station is not going to close.
Right, you don't play.
Unfortunately, you don't have a lot of notice, but it's been brought up decent seven year. You know, fifty grand, near fifty grand there, putting different things. Major overhaul is twenty years old. So I think these are probably what he expects to get another, you know, ten or twenty years out of it.
So you have good news for us, right Karen?
I do not have any good news for you. Um, I have options. Yes, you can use fund balance. Would it make me sick to my stomach? Maybe. Um, I did, I have contacted the bank about financing and rates, just reached out to them real quick. And as the email that I received back was rates are changing quickly. So I asked them for a five year rate, ten year, twenty year rate. Four point three seven five for five years. You're going to pay, you know, a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars over the life of the loan for the interest. That's not so bad. Can you afford those payments? They will come out of the general fund. The pool is not going to pay for them. What I, what I, from the years of their profit and loss that I have, they pay for their expenses as they go, not the bond payments. You know what I mean? They can't cover that in the revenue that they bring in. So no matter what we do, just think of that as an expense in your budget this year for the general fund, regardless of how long we finance it. If, and I'm, this is on one million dollars, the information that I'm giving you, because I think the way you guys said it to me is we need a million dollars one year to do repairs and a million dollars the next year, the following year. If you finance for 10 years, you're going to spend about two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars in interest.
What does this come out to per annually? Karen, sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
What does this come out to annually for the bond payment?
So if it five years would be about two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. If you do 10 years, it's a hundred and twenty five, which is similar to what we're paying currently, but that's still a 10 year loan. And that's for the one million dollars, not the next year's one million dollars. Twenty thousand, twenty years is seventy seven thousand dollars about, based on the interest rate of four point five three percent. For the, the second year of repairs, there's not a banker out there that's going to tell me what the interest rate is going to be. I just added a percent thinking, you know, worst case scenario. So you are going to incur a lot of interest financing this. What can you stomach? How do you, we don't have a lot of debt as a city. We have the sewer bonds that are on the tax bill. We financed some fire thing. I don't know. It's not much. You know what I mean? As a city as a whole in installment payments. It's not terrible. But it's a choice you got to make. I, I can't make that for you.
We'll start Karen's questions now. Nelson?
Where is the thirteen five going to come from if we spend for the exploratory piece?
It's going to be a Tim question.
That would come out of our equipment maintenance budget.
I'm sorry, Tim?
Equipment maintenance.
Okay. And, and just for the record, I am in favor of doing that because that could give us a better insight of what we're up against. I think it's smart money to do it, you know, and hopefully they can get to it quicker. And that way, you know, Dean's satisfied that we're moving fast enough. So I was just curious where that money's coming from. So, I mean, Karen's clearly, you know, brought out what it's going to cost us. Different finance options. So I'm, I'm satisfied with the numbers she's giving. I mean, it's not the numbers I like to hear, but I mean, at least she's given us multiple options. So thank you.
And, and Dean did express, did a very good job in expressing how, uh, kind of the expressed necessity of moving this forward. Um, because if we, with construction schedules and things that they are, um, as we get into winter, it's harder to work. But, um, it's still workable, but it's something we need to get going on in order to figure out. I'm all set there. Thank you.
Um, so a little bit of a timeline for me that if we, do we have to do the thirteen five first at exploratory? And then we know if it's going to be a million for sure, or how, how is that work? Like we spend the thirteen five, we find out it's going to be five million. I don't know. I'm just, you know, making something up. But my point is, you know, is there a point at which after we spend that thirteen five, that we'll know whether we need to spend the million or not? And we can kind of, um, you know, approve the package in steps or maybe a little bit on the timeline for me.
So there's, there's two different things that we'd come across at that point. Um, one that we would look at, uh, seeing if it was, if it was feasible and time permitted to go out to bid, uh, to do the entire project. But in order to write up a bids back, we need to know what's wrong. Doing that, we would come back, uh, after the thirteen five and the exploratory, we'd have a much better idea of how intense we need to be um, with the repair. Again, if I go back, the, to replace the entire gutter system around the entire pool areas, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, that they do not anticipate having to do that. So those, that's where those, that million dollar number was, was approximately two hundred and fifty thousand in concrete, seven hundred and fifty, um, in gutter. And again, these are not, these are more guesstimate numbers than accurate depictions of what we're looking at. Um, because unfortunately, uh, construction prices and things of that nature have been changing about as much as the interest rates. Um, so once we're, once we're able to nail that down, we'll have a better understanding of it. So that's kind of where we stand right now. I, I don't, I hope, I truly do. And I, and I hope that, uh, I'm optimistic in the fact that we, we would be significantly less and we can narrow down to exactly where those leaks are, um, by, by getting that exploratory done and having an idea. It's always the question, we can't tell what's behind the wall.
Okay. And then to follow up on that, how, how do we, how do we approve, you know, approve this? Do we have to approve it as, you know, like we, if we fix the concrete this year, let's say, you kind of have to spend the million next year to fix the filter then, right? I mean, if we're going in for the first phase, we kind of are also then, Karen, would you say going, it would, it would make sense to go the second phase, like we wouldn't stop there. So we're kind of looking at a two million dollar over two years. And then our, our only options then, the general fund and, and, and loans in the different years. That's really it.
You could split it up. You could do part of the, um, use general fund.
Oh, that's right. We could do half and half.
Yeah, you have a good point. But I don't know. You'll have to. Grants out there. Maybe Wayne County. Service Wayne County, maybe. Oh, I'm not supposed to talk.
Appreciate that.
She took the words out of my mouth. So.
Okay. So maybe some direction on that as well. And now that would be for the second million that we've been looking for the grant, we have time or no, we need that one million now. And then.
We would, right now, we need thirteen thousand five hundred to see what, where, where we stand. Um, and then we will consistently be looking for grants in ways that we can always subsidize the, the project as a whole.
Okay. And then tonight, well, I probably not tonight, but are we putting this on tonight's agenda then? Cause you, you need that done, the thirteen five. And then you have time for us to look at the one million in the next meeting, how we're going to do that. So how fast do you need us to make this decision? I guess.
I would, I would say that going forward with the thirteen five, if we could put that as a late item on today's agenda, then we would be, we'd be ahead of the game. It would by no means will we have in two weeks an answer as to what's wrong.
Right. Okay. So we have time for us to decide that next piece.
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
So just before we go any further, I just want to kind of gauge a sense for at least that piece of it. Does anyone have any issue with us putting the thirteen five as a late item this evening? Okay. I just want to make sure before we get too far ahead. Um, so I guess, and you kind of touched on it, Karen too, is that, I mean, it really boils down to for us, we either make the tough decision of spending a ton of money to, or we make the tough decision to not have a pool anymore. And I'm very much in the camp, but we need to figure out what we need to do financing wise to make sure that we do still have the pool. And I, I guess, you know, I don't want to do straight fund balance either. And I know that you expressed that too. But is there any kind of preliminary recommendation you may have on a, a direction you'd want to nudge us to in terms of what would make you most comfortable, um, financing wise? And that is not supposed to be a loaded question, but.
I, I kind of just prepared the documents with no, nothing in mind to push you either way. Okay. Go ahead, Dean. Okay.
I would suggest, because you know, you know, looking at a deficit for next year, I would not want to rely on fund balance. I'd be honest, if you could always go back and pay it down. But until we get through contract negotiations and the next budget, I believe was projected at one point, a trillion dollar deficit, whatever, I, I believe that would come down. That would be my recommendation is.
And rates could go up in the next year too. So you might, you might be better to.
If you're funding at four percent year from now, you may look at it and go, oh, it's eight percent because the defense rank rates up, then you go out, we might want to go into. I would hate to.
That's right.
So I don't have any additional questions here. Yes, it might be a Tim question. I know you kind of touched on it too, but, um, how, like, so, you know, authorizing this thirteen five, how long roughly is the turnaround time where you think they might have a full scope for us?
I know it's probably going to take him at least. I know it's probably gonna take them at least thirty days to get the, get it in there, get in, working on it. They have been aware of this for a few weeks now, and as soon as they're able to mobilize a, a crew, then they would do so.
Okay, so yeah, probably a decent waves into winter at that point, maybe.
It'll be a fun winter.
Whoever's out there.
Exactly.
So they can, they can do the work in the winter that we need them to do, or do they wait till spring and we just hope they get it done in time, or?
We don't want to hope is on that portion. Uh, yes, they will get as much work as they possibly can during the winter. They can still dig, they can still weld, and make sure all of that will be in a decent spot.
Okay, thank you. And thank you both for, uh, your information tonight. Appreciate it.
So, uh, yeah, as, as Karen said, we'll, we'll make sure that we can get any guarantee we can get, so.
All right, any other questions? Comments, notifications? Tim, Karen, you guys got anything? Well, I think, uh, just we'll set to do the thirteen five for a late item tonight. Then figure out what fun we have ahead from there, so. Thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
The part.
Sported, no discussion. Adjourn the study session at six fifty-two PM. We'll be back here in eight minutes for.